Very good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council meeting for Groundhog's Day, February 2nd, 2007. We are here looking for our shadows in Van Nuys. And we meet here every Friday, first Friday of the month, in Van Nuys City Hall. We welcome our viewers on Channel 35, L.A. City View, which can be seen throughout the city's cable system on Channel 35, every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. We broadcast live on Channel 35, and we are rebroadcast each evening in a rebroadcast of the day's council meeting. We usually meet in City Hall, Room 340, John F. R. Council Chambers, where people can testify there remotely when we are in Van Nuys, and vice versa when we are downtown. You can always come to Van Nuys and testify remotely. Members of the public are invited to our meetings. They also can testify on items that have not yet had a public hearing, either in committee or full council. Every item that we consider has a public hearing, either in our committee, or if it's not been done in the respective committee, we have that in full council. Also, each meeting, we have general public comment, which is for items that are not on the agenda but are nevertheless under our jurisdiction, so we invite members of the public to join us for those meetings and to give their testimony. Our agendas are available online at our city's homepage at www.lacity.org. There's also a wealth of information about committee meetings, the structure of the city council, and important numbers for your elected officials in city departments. To access the city services, you need to improve the quality of your life here in Los Angeles. You also can watch the city council meetings with live streaming video webcast through the city's homepage at lacity.org. Lastly, you can call on Councilphone, which is an audio service of the city that allows you, through your telephone, to listen to the proceedings of the Los Angeles City Council. The number is (213) 621-CITY. That number is also available here in San Fernando Valley at (818) 904-9450. On the west side, it's (310) 471-CITY. And in San Pedro, it's (310) 547-CITY. Excuse me. We are awaiting a full quorum. I want to thank the members of the city council that are here pursuant to our council rules on time. Councilmembers Labons, Rosendahl, Smith, and Zine. I know Mr. Wesson is here as well, just entertaining in the garage. And we're expecting a few other council members to join us shortly. But as is custom, on Fridays, we have a series of presentations to honor members of our city family and members of the community who have contributed notably to the well-being of our city. And so I'd like to recognize, for our first presentation, a council member from the 12th District, Councilmember Greg Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm very pleased to present to you today the winner of the 2005 Presidential Award for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching. I have a big script here my staff wrote, and I just wanted to say, I've been meeting with the business community in the Chatsworth area recently about what we can do to support business in the area and keep it very vibrant in the Chatsworth area. One thing I've repeatedly heard is that having a hard time finding qualified employees that have particularly math skills. And I know, as my daughter is a schoolteacher, as my daughter is a schoolteacher, the one thing that they cannot find enough of is math teachers. So anyone that goes in the field is really important to us, and as we look to build our communities and make L.A. really a vibrant business community, we need people with math skills. And to make that happen, we need math teachers. And so I'm very pleased to present to you today Margaret Peg Cagle, who was the winner, as I said, in the 2005 Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science. She has a lot of credentials. First of all, in her background, she went to Woodbury University and UCLA Extension. She received her Bachelor of Architecture from Carnegie Mellon University and has a Master's in Secondary Math Education. Past three years, she's participated in the Park City Math Institute, sponsored by the Institute for Advanced Study in Princeton, New Jersey, and has both attended and taught at the Northwest Math Interaction at the University of Washington. She really gets around the education community, and we're very proud of her accomplishments. Also, we're just very proud of what goes on at Longstreet Middle School, which is a highly gifted math school. And the studies she brings to that school, in math in particular, is so important. As I said, we are looking to ways to make math cool again. And that's one of the things that came out of my working group, is to want to make math cool again. They want to make people go into engineering, and we're losing a whole segment of society that have engineering skills. And so what you're doing is critically important to the people of Los Angeles and to our children. So we want to congratulate you for your success, for your Presidential Award, the opportunity to go to the White House and meet the President of the United States, and just for your excellence in math and education. So thank you for being a great teacher, obviously a fantastic teacher, the excellence we're by the President, also in math, not only in course study. And so thank you for that. With that, we have a resolution right here on the council, and me thanking you and congratulating you on the 2005 Presidential Award of Excellence. Thank you very much.
No, I think the councilman absolutely hit it on the head when we're talking about making math cool again. And that doesn't mean drilling kill. We've got to get kids excited, which means we have to have not only competent but excited teachers in the classroom. And I think that everything that we can do to help people to become excited about mathematics and to develop math literacy is going to be better for not only our city but our state and our nation. Thank you very much.
Also, she got a $10,000 grant from the National Science Foundation for awards. That's great for her.
Congratulations, and thank you so much, Councilmember Smith. Our next presentation will be led by the council member from the 11th District. I want to welcome Bill Rosendahl for our next presentation of CB 11.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the city council, and folks watching this on Channel 35 throughout this great city. Many times, we come on Fridays and have presentations and awards, and we have a lot of city employees that we say thank you, thank you, thank you to, give plaques, and tell them how great they were and are. Well, in this particular moment, I got to tell you something. For the last two years, since I've been on the government, I have had the incredible pleasure of working with Lydia Kennard. Lydia, just come a little closer so we can see her. And I have to tell you that the mayor, when he appointed her to be head of the airport, bringing her back was a blessing for all of us. Her credibility, her professionalism, and her work ethic is so great that everybody ended up in a room for three weeks trying to do an airport settlement. It was Lydia who provided the gravitas, the history, the background, the credibility to everybody in the room. She knew the issues backwards and forwards, and with her great leadership, we all sat there and ended up with a settlement at the airport that, for my constituents in Westchester, was a godsend. The settlement basically says, "Expansion is no longer where LAX goes. Regionalism is where we go." But reinvesting in the infrastructure of that airport, which hasn't happened since 1984, is critical to all of us. It's critical because reinvesting in the infrastructure is what we should be doing all over this great nation on every project, but this is one of the most intense airports in the world. And for us to start doing what we needed to do many years ago only happened because of Lydia's involvement. I'm going to read a few points on paper, but that came from the heart because I've had this wonderful moment of being able to work with her. Lydia is an amazing woman who has given a lot to the city and its airport. She started at Lawa in 1994 as Deputy Executive Director for Design and Construction. I'd like the Lawa folks to come on behind us here a little bit. Those are in the room here. Please, we'd like to show the solidarity here, and family too. We'd like your lovely daughter to come on up, who's right there right now. Daughter is Marliese. Where's Marliese? Hi, Marliese. Lydia held the position of Executive Director from 1999 to 2003, and then the mayor, recognizing that he would need a strong and smart leader at the helm, coaxed her back October of 2005. This is truly a public servant. A person that comes back, knows the problems there, but appreciates the mayor and the leadership that he's providing, but more importantly, provides the talent that we need to do what we need to do. So this has been just amazing. Lydia has a number of achievements since returning. I'd like to highlight just a few. Within three months of her return as Executive Director, Lydia successfully negotiated the settlement of litigation against LAX master plan. Lydia helped to reduce traffic in and around LAX by promoting what has become a very popular and successful flyaway service to Union Station. From all over the city, we have the flyaway now. Lydia has helped us bring the dream of regionalism closer to fruition by committing the resources to reactivate the Southern California Regional Airport Authority, which I now have the pleasure of being chair of. Under Lydia's leadership, Lawa has applied for and received a grant from the federal government to reestablish commercial air service out of L.A. Palmdale, which will be operating this summer. When you talk regionalism, you have to make it happen. She's making it happen with us right now in the Palmdale. The reactivation of the Green Line Task Force to finish the Green Line through LAX. The start of renovation of the Tom Bradley International Terminal allows Lawa's willingness to look at ways to make the terminal as green as possible. The South Runway Project is underway, and will help alleviate the chronic incursions we experience on the south field. It's always a sad day when the city loses such a valuable person, but we wish Lydia luck in her future endeavors and thank her for her years of service to the city. And I hope we can bring her back in some consulting capacity to advise us as we go further in regionalism. Lydia, it's been an honor to be associated with you. We have the usual plaque, but this time we framed it, and there's the plaque. Let's all take a group photo for everybody. Come on closer.
And while you're posing for the photograph, we have a couple of council members who would like to add their good wishes as well. So Councilmember Gruhl.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Rosendahl, for acknowledging Lydia. She is one of a kind, and a woman who, I think, has been a role model for so many people in her work and balancing life. And I know when we first met, I just got elected, she was ready to have her child, and I was a few months behind her on that. But I knew if she could do it, I could do it. And that when she came back to City Hall, we were so excited to the airport for her to be part of it. And you have done so much, not only in your career at LAX, but even more so since you have been the general manager and accomplished more in this last year and a half than I think anyone would have expected. And so we know that you are a part of the fabric of Los Angeles, you and your family. Had the pleasure of knowing your sister as well. And this has really, I think, been a great experience for the city of Los Angeles, and the many accomplishments that Bill Rosendahl mentioned are just a few of the many that have had an impact on the city of Los Angeles. And we know you're not going far, that you'll still be around, and just wanted to add my congratulations to you today, and that we will sincerely miss you but welcome you in the halls of City Hall. Congratulations on your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gruhl. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Well, Lydia says, "Sorry to say goodbye again." We did that once, but you know. When I first met Lydia, actually, I met looking at her resume, and I looked at her resume and said, "I have never seen a better trained person, professional, in my life." Your resume speaks volumes about your abilities, and it's a brilliant resume, but you follow that up, being just a wonderful, brilliant person. And I think your first time at the airport was a great learning curve for you, and maybe that time off, when you came back, let you really focus this last year and a year and a half, because you've really been a tremendous energy over there and focused in the airport once again and getting it moving. And you're a great loss, because you're a great asset to L.A., a wonderful manager, a good person to work with. Now, we also see that you're a great mother, and I think that's more important than all those other things. So congratulations on your two terms of service. We now have three terms in L.A., so you can come back. It's okay. It's a good thing now. So you can come back and see us again and work for us one more time after we raise the family again. So anyway, best luck to you. You're a wonderful person to work with and a great manager, and we're going to miss you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Our next speaker is Mr. Wesson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President and members. You know, I think that Lydia, you and I have known each other since 1987. And whenever I think about you, I think of two words, class act. You've always been professional. I mean, given your family, I mean, what is that, the fruit doesn't fall too far from the tree? I mean, your family has been committed to this city, and I'm sure they are very proud of you. And this is the first opportunity that I've ever had to see this drop-dead gorgeous daughter of yours, who is obviously proud of her mother. But what I want to just wrap it up to say, you've done a phenomenal job. And when you were there, things were stabilized. People felt comfortable. People knew that you were there to do the job, and you will be missed. As Greg said, of course, we'd like to have you come back for a third term to do anything, but you will be missed. The work that you've done has been phenomenal, and I think you've set an example for not just women but for all people of color, that anything is possible. So it's kind of befitting that, on this day, that we're going to begin our celebration of African-American Heritage Month, or History Month, or whatever the heck you want to call it, that you're here as a trailblazer for African-American women throughout this state, this city, and this country. Anyway, good luck to you in the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Our next speaker is Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Remember, the first time we met, before you started having babies, and every time you see you have babies, you come back to work. I read an article about that. So maybe it's time again. Relax a little bit. No more, no more. Our beautiful daughter there. How old is she?
Twelve.
Twelve years old. And yet to cut school today, right?
Yeah. She brought her books.
She brought her books, doing some study on the side. But I know you've done well there. The airport has been obviously controversial. You've weathered those storms. It's been safe for the folks that travel, and it's been an opportunity for you to really give to the city of Los Angeles and the folks that are behind you, obviously, the support. But all those travelers that venture in and out of LAX all the time, and all that you have done to make it work for the people of this region, other regions that visit Southern California, you don't have to worry about the snowstorms, you don't have to worry about closing the airport because of the weather conditions, but to keep those travelers flying in all of the Lawa facilities. So congratulations to you. And you did accomplish that, which I remember we discussed. Let's do some more flyaways. You made that major accomplishment. I understand it's doing extremely well to get the travelers in. So congratulations. Enjoy this retirement, and whatever the future holds for you and your family, the best to you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hahn is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I certainly just want to rise and add my words of tremendous respect and admiration for you. And it's been amazing watching you, particularly for women. I think for women everywhere and young girls, to see a woman heading up, you know, one of the largest international airports is such a positive, important role model. I mean, it just, it speaks volumes to girls on what they can become, what can they, what can they can achieve in their, in their lives, and that their dreams are not that far-fetched. So I love that. And, you know, what a world we live in, and what a world we live in that you've had to really accommodate in terms of air travel, passenger inconvenience, new things happening regularly. You know, just recently, we had the ban on liquids. And, you know, what that meant for you to pull together everybody in a very short time and decide, you know, how we were going to implement that new, new plan from TSA. So I think what you've had to work with since 9/11 was something no other director of an airport, I even think even in the future, will ever have to deal with like you have, and you've done it in such a great way. And I also give you great kudos, Lydia, for how you really got the connection between the airport and the community. And your staunch persistence and dedication to make sure that the community benefits package was realized for all of the surrounding communities of that airport really showed a lot of, just real wisdom. Again, something no other director of an airport really had to deal with. And I looked at you with admiration and a little bit of envy, because, as I used to say, I want that same sort of passion from folks at the Port of Los Angeles, to really fight for the community when it's not that popular, when it's not what other airport directors are doing. And you were willing to travel to Washington, D.C. to fight on behalf of the community. And I think you've probably done more to, you know, ease the tensions between the surrounding communities of the airport and the air traffic industry. So I really want to congratulate you for the great work you've done. We will miss you. Maybe this will be just a short retirement, too, and the next thing you know, we'll be calling you back. But congratulations, and you're one of the best, I think, that we've ever had and probably ever will have.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Labons.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, Lydia, it's so wonderful to see you and your daughter here, and best wishes to your family on this great transformation from one role to another. Life is a series of chapters, and you have quite a few chapters, all great chapters. And Mr. Rosendahl, I want to thank you for arranging this and to see the great staff behind you. I remember not so long ago, Lydia, there was a very unique moment there. Every top general manager is what Ms. Hahn spoke about as a role model, and Karen Sisson was out at the airport. Then every top manager from the airport just happened to be a woman who were at the center table for the first time some years ago when you were presenting the budget. It was a kind of unique moment, but your leadership has brought that. I just wish you well. I've known you for over 25 years, because I'm first of all, working with your dad, the great, late, great architect, who designed the building at Sixth and Parkview, which is now, it's been a few buildings, but now it's the home of the Mexican concert right across from Magartha Park, when it was in the old fourth district, and working with you and your father. And to see you rise, I think that's the great thing in a city, is when you see other people who you grew up with and they rise to great roles. And being a leader of the fifth busiest airport in the world, is that correct? Fifth busiest world? And we're the eighth-largest metropolitan area in the world, second-largest city in the United States. The modernization plan that hopefully will see that the regional airports grow, and I just can't say enough about how you corrected the situation when it seemed like it was going the wrong way. Los Angeles is a great city for, you could say, five things in our history. I mean, we've got a lot of great things, but the water certainly from Mulholland, the Port of Los Angeles, and Phidias Banning, those people who came before you and developed Minesfield to the airport. And your work on that is truly to be commended, because it gets us through this period of time, and we have to do more, because it's important to have travel. Next week, members, I'll be coming to the motion with Ms. Hahn to ask us to look into the challenges that this country has laid upon those who come to visit the United States and the barrier that they put up due to the State Department's concerns on issues. I want to see people come to Los Angeles and enjoy the city safely and be able to go home safely, all the way around. And I think that's it. Airport is that gateway. So I'm just very proud of you personally, Lydia, because you've kind of grown up opposite and side by side. You're a great resident of the beautiful Louvio fan of Altadena, so you can see this old view here. I have something for you and your daughter and your family. A loaf of pumpkin bread, if I may add to it. Because truly, Lydia Kennard is an angel in the city of angels. Thank you, Lydia.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. For those kind words, Mr. Labons, and that great history lesson, as always, and I just want to add my good wishes as well, Lydia, that it's been extraordinary working with you. I've been a huge fan of yours, and any incarnations you want to come back to the city, and we are more than excited to have you back, but we've been extraordinarily gifted to have you in our presence through different administrations. These are choppy political waters, not just the airport but the city, and you have been able to navigate them with such grace and such aplomb that, for all of us, you really set the standard for what it means to indeed be a public servant. So thank you. May your wings take you to new heights, and certainly, the motion to rename the Runway, Kennard Runway, will be expediting through the, the most controversial one, of course, to the legislature. Because we wouldn't want it to be easy, but congratulations. And with that, we'd love to hear from you.
Just so long it's not the Memorial Runway. Thank you so much. And Councilmember Rosendahl, thank you for this wonderful honor, and to all of you for the very kind words. As I have had almost over a decade now of service to the city of Los Angeles, it has been really my pleasure and honor to serve the residents and the people of Los Angeles, and as I serve the council as well. This is my second tour of duty, and I've made promises to the Lawa staff that I won't return again. But I do, do hope to be involved in, in particular, the LAX master plan and the regionalization of our airport system. It's really very important to me. It's something that I've been committed to since I got to the airport system, and it's really important that we enhance the infrastructure and modernize the infrastructure at LAX while also creating new opportunities for people to use other airports in this region. And finally, I just want to thank my family. You can't do the kind of jobs that we all do without a supportive family. I have a wonderful husband who unfortunately is going to be here, but our little son had a fever, so they both couldn't be here. So they're watching on Channel 35, and Marliese and I are representing the family. So I just wanted to thank them for all the support and love that they give me every day, and the opportunity for me to do these kind of things that I really enjoy. So thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Our next presentation will be given by Councilmember Dennis Zine of the 3rd District. Mr. Zine.
Come on, cheering section. Cheering section. The big envelope. We have six minutes, six minutes airtime. It's almost a Broadway production.
Thank you, Mr. President. Joined with representatives from the Canoga Park All-American City. It's like we're a chorus line getting ready to go. We are saying goodbye to a lady who's run the Madrid Theater for us for a long time and moving on to other activities in our neighboring community of Santa Monica. Correct? See, I got that right. Denise has... We are saying goodbye to a lady who's run the Madrid Theater for us for a long time and moving on to other activities in our neighboring community of Santa Monica. Correct? See, I got that right. Denise has, born in London, came to California in the mid-sixties as a teenager, graduated from Beverly Hills High School, went on to earn a bachelor's theater and education from UC Santa Cruz. Decided that teaching was not a career for her, she headed to New York to pursue acting.
Wasn't for you either.
(laughing) Wasn't for you either. While awaiting stardom, she began sterling silver jewelry. This vocation led to a 22-year career as a designer and jeweler, with her pieces included in several celebrity collections and sold all over the world in galleries and boutiques. In 1999, decided to go back to school, earned an MBA at USC. She combined on the job experience, running her own business with the formal business, which then, what she obtained at USC, in the service of advancing nonprofit organizations as diverse as USC's Entertainment Technology Center, Teen Line, and several theaters. She has been a general manager of the Madrid Theater since Valley Cultural Center took over management of the venue under contract to Department of Cultural Affairs in July of 2003. Under Denise's management leadership, the Madrid has expanded its bookings from around 60 usage days per year to more than 290 during 2005. Among her accomplishments have been the development of creative rental agreements that encourage producers and artists performing in the Madrid to present additional performances for the area's schoolchildren. This agreement facilitated the expansion of Valley Cultural Center's 10 concert, summer Monday morning concert series to include a number of additional school performances throughout the year. As a result of her efforts, local schoolchildren have been able to experience full-length plays, operas, and ballets, well as musical comedy, music on historic instruments, modern dance, hip-hop, and tap. I like that. Hip-hop. You got that right, Jean.
Yes, I got that.
Almost, Mr. Zine. Keep practicing.
Well, we're not going to do the performance here. Denise serves on the boards of Main Street Canoga Park and the Los Angeles Women's Theater Festival, lives in Los Angeles with her son Carl, a singer-songwriter with the band. I love this name, Mudlicious.
Mudluscious.
Mudluscious.
Yes.
Mudluscious. Los Angeles City Council congratulates you on your service, dedication to the Madrid Theater, and the citizens of Los Angeles, and the people of the Canoga Park area. We have a resolution signed by all of us, the mayor of the City of Los Angeles acknowledging you and thanking you, and we have two representatives from the Canoga Park area, Main Street Canoga Park, our historian, Jean, and also Mary, who are here as cheerleaders. So we're not going to do a little hip-hop, but before I turn it over, I want to have our historian have a few words, because you've been at Canoga Park for many, many years, and Mary, you've helped transform it into the American city, which we received that award, and we're going to hear from you, Denise. Jean?
I just can't say enough for this lady. She has done so much for the theater in Canoga Park and a true dedication, and we're really going to miss her. And, but she has so much to offer, and she's going to a new job, which is absolutely fantastic. Maybe she'll tell what it is. And so when things go out, other things come along, and she's just a very special lady.
Mary? Mary Patterson?
Just to add that we've been so fortunate to have Denise. I don't know another theater manager that works so many hours, and she'll be very, very difficult to replace, but we definitely offer our gratitude to Denise for everything she did and wish you all the best.
Thank you so much.
Denise, Denise. Your turn, dear.
I'd just like to thank Jean and Mary and Dennis for their very kind words and also for the opportunity to have had these three and a half years at the Madrid and to have been able to build such a fabulous resource for the West Valley. It really was a pleasure, even though it was a lot of hours.
And a lot of aggravation.
But...
Because you were there all the time.
No, it was a wonderful opportunity, and it has led to a new, even more spectacular opportunity at the Madison Project in Santa Monica, which is a brand-new theater that will open in December. So I thank you, and I thank the Cultural Affairs Department and Valley Cultural Center for the opportunity. Thank you.
Denise, thank you. We wish you well. Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. Our final presentation will be directed by a council member from the 10th District, who will be joined by a council member from the 15th District, Councilmembers Herb Wesson and Janice Hahn.
Good morning, Mr. President and members. It's a great honor to kick off Black History Month in the Valley for the first time. The Valley is a very important part of what makes the City of Los Angeles great, so I think that this is a good thing for us, and I think it's very appropriate that we honor African-Americans from the Valley who have put in a lot of work, not only to make the Valley a better place, but to improve the lives of hundreds and hundreds of people in this region. Okay, give us another mercy applause, Cam. I'm proud to be joined by a dear friend of mine for 20 years, Janice Hahn, and it's very appropriate that she's here. She's one of the few people that I know, well, her brother included, are two of the few people that I know that know every verse of the Black National Anthem. I mean, after the first verse, I'm lip-syncing, but I mean, Janice knows, so it's very appropriate that she's here, and she is, she alleges that she's an honorary member of the Black Caucus, but I submit to you that she is a member of the Black Caucus. Now, today, I want to highlight, put a highlight on Reverend Brodus. This man comes from a family of individuals that always believed that as you go along the way, that you have to help others. I mean, he's got a history that goes all the way back to his grandfather, Zachariah?
Zachariah.
Zachariah. Zachariah. Back, born in the 1800s, and if I remember correctly, he was one of nine children. Your dad was one of 19 children, and you are...
One of 11.
One of 11, and you have six and eight grandkids. And all of them have been instilled with the worth, work ethic, and the commitment to community that started back in the 1800s, when your grandfather was born. He had the vision and saw that there was a need to start a Chamber of Commerce, a Black Chamber of Commerce, here in the San Fernando Valley. He didn't do it because he just wanted to create this segregated chamber. He did it because he wanted to empower people of color, and this chamber programs and dialogues with all other chambers from different ethnic backgrounds to try to make life better for all. We on the City Council are sorry a little bit because Mr. Parks is not here today, and Ms. Perry, who's our representative on AQMD, could not be here, but trust me, Reverend, they truly wish that they could be here. So they've given Janice and I the big job of presenting to the chamber, the African-American Chamber in the Valley, a certificate signed by every member of the Los Angeles City Council. I'm going to present this to you now, and I'm going to ask my dear friend and colleague if she would say a few words. Everybody, could you join me in giving this man and this great organization, it's been in existence almost 12 years, a round of applause that they deserve? Janice, come on, we're going to take that. Oh, wait. There she is.
All of you.
Come on. The great councilperson from the 15th District, Janice Hahn.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Herb, and I'm very glad to start off our celebrations of Black History Month, African-American Heritage Month, and we will be doing every Friday of this month, we will be honoring those who have made a contribution to African-American heritage. And I will say that Councilmember Parks and Councilwoman Perry and Councilmember Wesson and I have been planning these four Fridays in this month, and it should be a great way to highlight different people in and around the City of Los Angeles during this great month. You know, the African-American Chamber of, the San Fernando Valley Black Chamber of Commerce was actually chartered in 1916, and it was started by a group of business owners and executives to promote the growth of African-American-owned enterprises in the San Fernando Valley. And it's important because it was not meant to be started to in any way compete or take away from the Chamber of Commerce, but to find a way to connect many of the businesses that might feel disenfranchised in a way. And I want to say today, I've been thinking about this, and as the councilwoman that represents the Port of Los Angeles, what I want to do, what I always want to do, is figure out how to connect this incredible international trade industry, which, by the way, is growing by leaps and bounds. It's like the one industry that will never see any kind of decline or softening, but yet I feel like particularly women and minority-owned businesses have a real disconnect with the international trade industry. And I know it took me a long time to get here this morning, but it's really not that far from the Valley to San Pedro. And I would like to take this opportunity to officially invite the San Fernando Valley Black Chamber of Commerce to come and visit with me at the Port of Los Angeles, and let's set up some meetings with the Port of Los Angeles so we can begin to get others throughout the City of Los Angeles involved in what I think is really one of the biggest growing industries anywhere in Los Angeles, and that's the international trade industry. So let's do that. That would be a great way for me to really connect to your chamber and to the Valley, and I want to do that, and I think that would be something we could celebrate next year when we celebrate you. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. We have a couple of other council members that want to add their good wishes. Mr. Wesson, first Ms. Gruel, and then Mr. Labons.
Thank you very much. And just so you know, Mr. Wesson, Mr. Cardenas and I decided we're honorary members of the African-American Caucus in the Valley here, just so you know, that will add to, hopefully you'll accept it.
You are unanimously.
Okay.
I'm sure I...
I know Reverend Brodus would do that for us, but I wanted to stand up and thank you for acknowledging the leadership of the African-American business community in the San Fernando Valley. Anywhere you go in the Valley, you see Reverend Brodus at all of the events and supporting and been active, as we talked about, business tax reform in the City of Los Angeles, how can we do that and help small and medium-sized businesses stay here and particularly provide outreach and support? And that this, this particular business community and across the city with the Greater Los Angeles African-American Chamber of Commerce and all that, we've worked with them to say, how do we combine all of our efforts? It's about getting down to the nitty-gritty as to how to keep businesses here and how to help them grow. Because when we talk about dealing with the issues of gang violence and being able to afford housing in the city, it's about jobs and creating those jobs, and the people standing beside you and behind you are individuals who help every day make that happen. So I wanted to stand up and say congratulations and thank you for acknowledging them. Herb, you know, Reverend Brodus is really a part of the fabric as well, the City of Los Angeles and the Valley. Thank you. Thanks, Reverend Brodus.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Labons, and then Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to stand and salute Reverend Brodus and every member there. It's important to be engaged in, as Ms. Hahn spoke of the Port of Los Angeles, and we honored Lydia Cannard earlier and the airport, and for any organization to be connected to the city, it helps that organization grow. And Herb, I love the way you talk about the Brodus family and their history here in the San Fernando Valley and a school named, and honor your family and all the work that you've done. You've always consistently pushed for the awareness of people to make it better for other people in this Valley and in this city, and I'm just proud to stand for you. Remember the cold night you invited me out there when I worked for the mayor? And you had that very special poet from Baltimore, whose name escapes me at the moment, but you're a special man with special people around, and with the 100th anniversary of the port, the only thing I was pushing, Janice, is maybe you have a great parade, right? If you get that Port of Los Angeles in your parade, and then you start connecting, and I'm a parade guy, and it just, I like when the departments come out. So that's an opportunity to do that. Mr. President, thank you. Congratulations.
Please, Mr. Cardenas is next, and then we'll hear from Reverend Brodus.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank my colleague Herb Wesson for bringing this honor before the council and allowing the people of Los Angeles to see the wonderful work that we have here in the San Fernando Valley with many organizations, NAACP, the Black Chamber of Commerce. You'll see these organizations in many events, be it business events, healthcare events, events for the children, when it's time for gift-giving at the end of the year, where we're welcoming all people from all nations, from all creeds, where these organizations are a very big part of these events, are part of putting the programs together. They're a big part of the programs. And one of the things that warms my heart is if there's an organization or people in the San Fernando Valley who are working with youth and always incorporate them in everything that they do, it's these organizations. So I just wanted to point that out and thank you very much for that honor of making the San Fernando Valley a better and special place because of the wonderful things that you're doing. Thank you very much.
And actually, Mr. Zine has added his good wishes as well.
Thank you. I want also to offer my congratulations to Janice. I love what you said, it's not that far from San Pedro to the Valley, which means we should have more council meetings out here at Van Nuys City Hall. Right?
See what you started?
No, I think it's great. We did have one in San Pedro. But in all seriousness, when I was sworn into office, there was a Reverend Brodus who was there, who had the prayer at the temple, the Jewish temple, Catholic priest, and you were there saying prayers at the time I was sworn into office. And the close allegiance that we've had all these years, from the time with the LAPD on through now the City Council, and we have Valley College represented here, we have the community represented here, we have a population out here who is living that American dream. We want to help and assist that. And I want to congratulate my brother Herb Wesson, who I call Uncle Tenuse.
Yes.
Because he crosses the border to Lebanon, I cross the border, and, you know, we're brothers. We're all under brothers and sisters, and we want to make sure that due recognition is given, and we congratulate you for the activities that are taking place and encourage you to continue those and keep the community involved. And your involvement in this community is well noted. Every time we have an event, Reverend, you are there. Zeta Brodus is there, and that's significant. And the other representatives of the city who are here of the Valley, we encourage you to participate more than you are now in the activities of this wonderful city, this wonderful San Fernando Valley. So God bless you all, and Herb, thank you for keeping up the banner and keep it moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, you know, it was, Councilmembers Parks and Perry were very actively involved in putting this together, and I want to say again to you, Reverend, that we have a thriving African-American community in Pacoima, Lake Buteras, and I'm so proud of the fact that you've taken the lead. In fact, my mother-in-law, I used to come to Pacoima all the time because that's where my mother-in-law lived. So with that, I'd like to present to you the Chair of the San Fernando Valley Black Chamber of Commerce, Reverend Brodus.
I want to thank the council members for this opportunity. It's always humbling to be in the presence of giants, and I brought my giants with me. Come on, I'm going to let them introduce themselves on national television.
Melita Fortson.
I'm Yasmandela Husay from Valley College.
Wendell Teague.
Elizabeth Badger from Minority Outreach.
Christopher Elliott, Statewide Express.
Norman Harris.
It's not always a good thing to give a preacher a microphone.
Don't worry, that's why we have a clock.
I have it.
However, it's always a pleasure to be with the Los Angeles City Council. Each council member has, over the years, blessed not only the San Fernando Valley, but me personally and my family as well. I thank you for the kind words, I thank you for your recommitment not only to the San Fernando Valley Black Chamber of Commerce, but to the San Fernando Valley community. We're all connected, we all have the same battles to fight. Most of us, if not all of us, have the same dreams and aspirations for our children and our children's children. So the struggle here is not an individual struggle, it's not a small segment's struggle, but it's a community struggle. And the community that we speak of today is the community of Los Angeles, which is the best city in the whole wide, wide world. And I just want to thank you. I thank my parents, my mother who is still alive and with us, Rosa Brodas, Mother Brodas. And I thank the members of the San Fernando Valley Black Chamber, because even if I may have conceded the idea to begin this particular chamber, it takes the work of men and women who are committed to see change. It takes the work of men and women who are committed to make those changes and to give the sacrifices of their time and their resources to make not only the San Fernando Valley, but our community, the Los Angeles community, a better place. Again, Councilmember Weston, thank you very much. Councilmember Han, thank you very much. I gotta tell you this, for whatever reason, the Holy Spirit has put it on my mind, when you walked in the room, the first thing that came to my mind is the fact that when Martin Luther King came to Los Angeles, the first and only person of any stature in our government here in the city to meet Dr. King was Janet Han's father. And that's a long-lived legacy and a strong legacy to continue. So to Councilmember Parks, to Councilmember Zion, Tom Labange, Gruel, Cardenas, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, all of Zion, oh, forget that. Vincent, Vincent is my brother, but to all of you and to your staff, one of the things that I've been so blessed and the chamber has been so blessed with is the fact that each one of our council members has some of the best staff that I've ever had to work with. And if it wasn't for the work of staff, a lot of things wouldn't get done, let's just be realistic. So to our, to the staffers, thank you so very much for your time in there. And may God continue to bless you, may God continue to bless the city of Los Angeles, and may we move towards a more peaceful and more harmonious world. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Reverend, and thank you.
Mr. President, it just is, the world is so small. I've got to bring this young lady up, Ms. Delahoussaye again. Her husband run black college tours, and it was because of them that I was able to get my two older sons to go to college. They went to college in Atlanta, one went to Morehouse, and one went to, uh-oh, what was the other school? Morehouse? What do you think I'm having a senior moment? Morris Brown, Morehouse and Morris Brown. But give her a round of applause for all she does.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for being a part of this today.
Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Huisar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Zion, Garcetti, ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Cardenas moves and Mr. Labange seconds. If there's no objection, those will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those will be moved by Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. Smith seconds, and if there's no objections, those two are approved.
Mr. President, do we should take a public comment at this time?
Let's run through the agenda first and we'll come back to public comment.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there is a request to continue two of the items, item six and 13, and both requested to be continued to next Friday, February 9.
Okay, is there any objection, colleagues, for number six and number 13 to continue those until the 9th of this month? If not, so ordered. Next items?
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearings, items one through five are street lighting district ordinances.
Okay. You don't have any cards on that? We'll open and close the public hearing on those. And any specials, colleagues? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved, even though some of them are to deny.
And actually, the ordinances go over for one week.
Right, we have less than 12 members, so those will go over one week. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items seven and eight, item six has already been acted on, item number eight, the committee report has been distributed to the council members.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move, it's just one report?
Yes, it is.
There was a motion though, okay, I'll go ahead and move that for Mr. Parks. And the seven is received and filed, colleagues, so it's up in the roll on those two. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Seven is received and filed, eight is approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items nine through 13, item number nine is confirmation of the commissioner, do we should hold that on the desk for a moment?
Yes, please, let's hold that on the desk. And we have card from the public on that as well.
That would leave items 10, 11, and 12.
Okay, colleagues, we will open and close the public hearings on 10, 11, 12. Any specials? 10, 11, 12. Seeing none, let's go ahead on the ballots, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next item?
And that would take counsel, do we should take up item number nine at this time?
Let's go public comment. Okay, now it's time for public comment. I'd like to invite Jamie Cordova to come forward as our first speaker. Welcome.
Good morning, City Council. Welcome to Van Nuys once again as President of Van Nuys Neighborhood Council. Everyone is always welcome to attend our council meetings. But today's my issue is I want to address Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Cardenas, you lied to us.
Sir, if you please, it will address the councils' whole, rules of decorum.
You got it.
Thank you.
I apologize. But nonetheless, in today's paper, two crimes, one, both in the sixth district, crime is out of control, it's up 42% in the valley. We have no representation, nobody is standing up to these gangs, nobody's supporting the police department. I'm telling you, we need to do something here in the valley. You're forcing everyone to move out. We cannot no longer have this take place in the San Fernando Valley. I've asked for assistance on getting a trade school, a vocational school. We're burying too much of our young, innocent, young. They're dying at the hands of crime. If we put a vocational school in the valley, at least we have an alternative education for them to go to. And I ask everyone from the city council to work with the school district, to work with the community college, to see what we can do to bring a vocational school to the valley and begin to suppress the crime. Let's get crime under control.
Our next speaker is Raymond Yu.
Good morning. For the record, this is Raymond Yu, I'm letting you know, next Sunday, 11th February 2007, from 06:00 through 1:00, 06:06 to 12, new daytime hours, there will be the 29th Annual Firecracker 10K1 event will take place at 950 North Broadway between College and Bernard Street. However, Firecracker 10K runs at 8 o'clock in the morning, going up the hill to Elysham Park, then down the hill to Queens East Mizzou and Dodge Stadium, then runs back to Chinatown, Los Angeles. Firecracker10k.org, 3232561363. Sunday, 18th February 2007 is the first day of Happy Chinese Dunun New Year, Gong Hei Fa Cai Year of the Four Big, 4705, which is in Chinatown. Then there will be the 108th Annual Los Angeles Chinatown Chinese Dunun New Year Golden Dragon Parade, which will take place on Saturday, 24th February 2007, from 14 o'clock through 17 o'clock, 2:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon. However, the Los Angeles Chinatown Golden Dragon Parade route will start at the Cathedral of Our Lady of Angels, North Hill and Temple Street, on Northbound Hill Street to Old Alpine and College Street, then the parade route turns eastbound on Bernard Street, then turns southbound on North Broadway, Southbound Broadway to College, Old, College, Alpine, Ford, and Caesar Chavez Avenue. The Golden Dragon Parade route ends at North Broadway and Caesar Chavez Avenue, dispatching soon before 101 Freeway. For more inquiries, please log on to www.lagoldendragonparade.com, lachinesechamber.org, Los Angeles Chinese Chamber of Commerce. Grand Force Suite E, 977 North Broadway, Los Angeles, California, 9612, that station microchip 213617396, and Chinatown Business Improvement District and Council, chinatongla.com, George Yu 2136, A6243. Room 208, 727 North Broadway, L9612, covered by Pageant Two Productions, CD1, and Pageant Two Productions, HZLA.org.
Thank you, Mr. Yu. Thank you. Susan Ruchan, is there any next speaker?
I'm asking you guys to change the noise law, to put decibel limits on churches, is Chapter 11, Article 5, Section 115.02B. I have a church blaring their bull horns on top of the church seven times a day, every day of the week, and there's nothing that the LAPD Noise Enforcement Team can do about it. I've spoken to the District Attorney's Office, Rick Schmidt, who said, there's not a code for this, or churches are exempt from the code. But I really think he said that there isn't a code. That's why the code needs to be looked at. The code needs to be changed. Ed Reyes already told, sent me a couple of letters saying, case closed, don't call me anymore. And so I'm asking the rest of you to look at an injustice that's not fair, that somebody can blast their bull horns all day into my house and that's legal. And I have to live with this ding dong, ding dong, ding dong. That's not fair to me. You don't want to hear it, neither do I. I'm sick of it. They're gonna put me in a padded room pretty soon. But nobody here gets it. This should not be legal, that you should be forced to hear something that nobody else, that somebody, anyone doesn't want to hear. There are laws on boom boxes, refrigerators, what time construction can start, but this can go on at any time as loud as they want. That's not fair. I'm asking you, the rest of you, to do something about it because he won't. He's already told me that in person, he's already sent me letters, he won't. Now, they're been adjusted, corrected in the past because it's somebody else's area that you're not gonna step on his toes, that doesn't, that doesn't go. That doesn't go, you're gonna let something that's not right go on because it's somebody else's area.
Next speaker is Chuck Tannen.
I don't want to hear ding dongs all day anymore.
Mr. Tannen?
Good morning, council members, and President Garcetti, Chuck Tannen, Valley Village. My theme today is what about us with regard to the living wage, poor workers, relocation amounts, and displacement of tenants. At the council meeting on Wednesday, last Wednesday, on the living wage issue, Eric Garcetti said the role of government is to make a win-win and reconcile the differences in poverty is a problem for all of us, government can help an entire neighborhood. Well, our city council's our government, what about us, living displaced tenants? Tony Cardenas said, the working poor are trying to live. Well, what about us? Tenants have to live too. Business, the balance between business and workers is the same as landlords and developers and tenants. Workers need a better place to work and live, and tenants need a better place to live. So what about us, displaced tenants? Janice Han said, we need an ordinance to protect living wage and workers. What about us? Protect affordable housing and living displaced tenants. Ed Reyes said, workers need to live in dignity. What about us? Tenants need to live in dignity too. Jose Huisar said solidarity with workers. Well, what about solidarity with tenants? Living wages and poor workers go hand in hand with relocation amounts, displaced tenants, and loss of affordable housing. And another issue, well, I don't have enough time, but if you reach for the treetops, you get the roots. You reach for the sky, you get the treetops. But if you reach for the moon and the stars, you get more living values and growth. This city was built on dreams. Nothing is impossible. For thousands of years, people took simple situations deemed impossible, made it possible, seizing simple ideas. Just look around us. And Wendy Gruel, I'd like to thank you for your hard work and continuing effort and leadership in protecting tenants from bad development decisions and saying that you keep a close eye on development.
And as a point of information, I know folks who are interested in that issue, we will, in two and a half weeks, take up the draft ordinances from the LA City Attorney's Office in a joint committee meeting, so please log on to lacity.org if that's an issue that interests you. Thank you. Hugh James Hardman is our next speaker, and then Nadine Hardman. Welcome.
Yeah, I'm a resident of Van Nuys, I've been for about 25 years, you may remember me, I spoke several months back. We've been trying to get ordinances and codes enforced on a specific property on our neighborhood, and it seems that there is a different set of rules for different people. I mean, we've had setbacks that have been ignored, we've had illegal structures that have been allowed to stay up there for too long, and in the process, we feel like we've been discriminated against because we've had to comply to orders, we've had to maintain the proper setbacks, and we feel like we're getting the runaround. And what's happening in the valley here is that you get people living in garages, turning them into kitchens, and having 15, 20 people living in one dwelling, having 10 to 12 cars in the front yard, and the building department doesn't know how to enforce that because they don't know that there's any specific code, that you can't have 12 cars parked on the grass in the front yard. That's what I've got to say. I think that, you know, if you're gonna enforce the core codes, you have to enforce them to everybody. You can't give certain groups leniency because you feel sorry for that they need to have 15, 20 people there and that the only way they can do it is to live in the garage and let the garage be converted into a house. And then, once the building department, please, Eric, if you give me attention, once the building department gave them the permits for this...
I'm taking care of business, but don't worry.
Yeah, okay. Once the building department gave them permits for this, they can't undo what they've already done. So we're just here to let you know that we've been trying. I did meet with Ron and David, and they're, so they're gonna help me, but it always seems that we're gonna, we're gonna do something, we're gonna do something, we're gonna do something. And meanwhile, we're the ones that have our property value devalued because of what the building department has allowed to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Nadine Hardman is our next speaker.
Hi, my name's Nadine Hardman. Glad to see my councilman here, I see a lot of empty spaces, I don't know if they're just not sitting. I'm here, you know, just to back up what my husband just said. We've been going through this, we spoke four months ago, we have not seen one thing change. I am so disappointed. I told my husband from the very beginning, and excuse me, but I said I really felt that building and safety and city council were in bed together. I hope after all this is said and done, I can come before the council and say that that's not true. But right now, that's how I feel. We came today, the city council knew we were coming today, they take my husband out, have a conference with him. We have asked for this at our home or anywhere, way before today. It just seems to happen, the day that we decide to speak at the city council meeting, they want to have a meeting with us. We've had open doors, we have had building and safety, code enforcement, health department, all in our home. Part of it was to go check to see our neighbor's house, look over our fence. We have open doors, we have nothing to hide. They have come to our house, they have really basically picked on us. We have heard that they have rights, our neighbors have rights, our neighbors have rights, our neighbors have rights. We have not yet heard what exactly our rights are. This has been a little, a little too, little, little too late, and today has been a little too late. So what we have to do now, I guess, is take it to a whole nother level because every time we call somebody, they say we're gonna go to the next, the next higher up. We go to the next higher up, they're gonna get back to us. No one has gotten back to us. I am so disappointed, so disappointed, so very disappointed in city council, so very disappointed in...
Mr. Hardman, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Sylvia Hawkins is in City Hall downtown. Ms. Hawkins, if you're downtown, we'll hear your public comments from council chambers.
Good morning, everyone. I would like to say good morning to the city of Van Nuys Public People. My public comment, as we say no on all alcohol, it is now 97% embalming fluid. This is what keeps them looking like big men ruling, as they continue to use steroids and embalming fluid, all whom have had a blood transfusion three times a week, has been faking kidney failure. These are black people with Jewish blood after and before death. You can't tell if they are Jewish only.
Ms. Hawkins, if you can make sure that you address things that are under jurisdiction. Thank you.
They skin test not by blood out of their veins, or by using a cotton-tip strip, a stripper to spit out of their mouth to determine the difference. For example, after examining... For example, after examining the size of a judge, once I went to court in Memphis, Tennessee, with a big man-looking appearance, he was not the same size...
Excuse me, Ms. Hawkins, for one moment, the city attorney needs to...
Twice as smaller than the judge that was...
Mr. President, she still appears to be off topic, and it's not within the jurisdiction of the city. She should stop talking. Ms. Hawkins, we thank you for your comments. We, just as a reminder to folks, we can only hear public comment on things that are under our jurisdiction, even if they're not on the agenda. So thank you very much, Ms. Hawkins. Daniel Gus is our next speaker here, and then Brendan Huffman will be next. Welcome.
Good morning. I've written four op-eds for the Daily News in the past year about problems at animal services. There's been a slew of other negative pieces in the LA Times and the Daily News about animal services. Everyone is negative, and I wanted to go over a couple of those items, and I'm asking the city council to invite Ed Boakes to come here the next time you're in Van Nuys, and I'd like to work with either Mr. Smith or Mr. Zine's office, since they're on public safety, to kind of give them the background of the slew of problems that we've had with Mr. Boakes being here for 15 months, and see if Mr. Boakes will field these questions that I'd like to fortify the city council with in advance of him coming here. My latest op-ed on January 4th in the Daily News expressed concern that Mr. Boakes was using the city's website to post a 3,274-word religious sermon, in which he mentions God 11 times, Abraham 15 times, Sodom and Gomorrah 5 times, things of that nature. There's another problem. In a recent article in the LA Times, there's an article about how, even though Mr. Boakes has been here for 15 months, 80% of the veterinarian positions are vacant. He says that these are, these are caused, these are problems caused by activists, but county doesn't have problems with activists. Almost every one of county's veterinary positions is filled. These are problems that are singular to the city of Los Angeles, and Mr. Boakes really needs to come here and be answerable for these problems. There's another article in the LA Times where a woman complained to Mr. Boakes about a problem with animals attacking other animals in Venice, and about Mr. Boakes, she writes, "Oh my God, I don't think I've ever been more insulted as a woman to be compared to a raccoon." So there are all sorts of problems going on, and Mr. Boakes is non-responsive to them, and if you can plan this out a month in advance, I can have a busload of people here to support what I'm telling you. Can you go to the shelter? He's got animals named Chronic, and Zero, and Killer, and how do you expect to save animals' lives when you have animals named Zero, and Chronic, and Killer?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments today. Brendan Huffman is our next speaker, and then Sharon Brewer will be after that.
Morning, council members. I'm Brendan Huffman with the Valley History and Commerce Association. Thanks for participating in this session in the valley. As you know, as we've communicated, we've been very involved with discussing the LAX hotel wage issue, and we've gotten, I've received more emails and phone calls from my members about this issue than anything I've experienced at VICA so far. So for, because of time constraints and also other issues, I just want to paraphrase that all VICA asks of you right now is to rework this ordinance, is to remember to include a carrot as you redraft this, and VICA remains ready to work with you, provide any input you would like. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huffman. Sharon Brewer is next, and then Bruce Darian will be on deck.
Hi. Hi, my name is Sharon Brewer, and I have comments for CD6, but I don't really see him sitting in his seat. I'm a wildlife advocate for Lake Balboa. On January 19th, 2006, CD6 honored for almost 20 minutes the dog whisperer for his work. CD6 councilman stated during the presentation that he would do more for the animals in this city. He also said, "No more condoning cruelty to animals." Isn't birds being injured or killed by fishing line and hooks considered cruelty? What about dogs off-leash chasing the birds and sometimes killing them? CD6 has done nothing in three and a half years to stop the ongoing cruelty to the wildlife at Lake Balboa. Maybe city council pay should be determined by their performance in their district, then maybe this problem would be addressed. Council members have voiced their opinions about problems, not in their district, example, Van Nuys Airport, but in this case, abuse of the wildlife at Lake Balboa. Nobody on the city council will step up for the wildlife. CD6, when are you going to stop the cruelty caused by the public at Lake Balboa? Mr. Labange, maybe you can help me, because you seemed like the only person that cared about the pelican the last time. This is a pelican with a six-inch lure, trouble hook each end at Lake Balboa. They also have remote-controlled bolts that are chasing the birds, dogs intentionally let off leash. Last Friday, 12 dogs in a three-hour timeframe were intentionally let off leashes to take and chase the birds. Please do something about the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Bruce Darian is next, and Noel Weiss is on deck.
Good morning, city council. I'm gonna expand what I spoke about the other day on the lawyers and law firms that are involved in the defense of the defendants under the False Claims Act on the Malibu Pier debacle, which also involves city council members and state legislators. We have Attorney General Janet Reno, John Ashcroft, Alberto Gonzalez, U.S. Attorneys John Gordon, Deborah Wang, Leon Wideman, Gary Plessman, Lisa Colombo, U.S. Attorneys, Theodore Zinger, Bill Lockear for the state, Ruben Beza and Lloyd Pellman of County Council, Scott Nave of Lamune &amp; O'Neill, Erwin Rana of Lewis, Brisbane, Bisgard &amp; Smith, Alejandro Camacho, James Arnoni, Stephanie Ward of Latham &amp; Watkins, Peter Zomber, Matthew Begodas of Murphy, Pearson, Bradley &amp; Feeny, H. Scott Serlin, Jeffrey Evans of Gordon &amp; Reese, Peter Dubowski, Haight-Brown, Bondstil, Michael K. Walton of Cosgrove, Berger &amp; Kester, Todd Crouch, Daniel Deek of Fonda &amp; Fraser, Samuel Arst, Jeffrey Fraser of Silver &amp; Arst, David Pasternak, State Court Receiver, John Patton of Pasternak, Pasternak &amp; Patton, Paul H. Levine, Henry Jannel, Law Offices of Henry Jannel, Mark H. Hoffman, Law Offices of Mark Hoffman, Edward Morrison, the Morrison Group, William J. Ray Jr., Edward Morrison of Lewis, Damato, Brisbane, Bisgard, Chrissy Hogan, Hank Jenkins &amp; Hogan, Neil &amp; Myers, Daley &amp; Heft, Mark L. Eisenhower, Carl Clayton &amp; Jensen, Timothy Lee, Law Offices of Timothy Lee, Ken Grossbart, Michael Yarrow, Law Offices of Abolus &amp; Grossbart, Frank W. Malloy, John Hunter, Hunter Malloy, Sausalito, David C. Bees, David L. Nash, Robbins, Miller &amp; Cerersey. These are just a partial list of the law firms and lawyers that are involved in the defense in hiding the fraud, the defendant's fraud under the False Claims Act on this historic landmark. It's gone on for seven years, it's continued, it's been closed for 12, and we'll continue with this. Thank you.
Noel Weiss is our next speaker, then Candida Morris will be our final speaker for, oh, sorry, second, last, then Mr. Doug, sorry, last one.
We don't want to forget someone. Council, good morning. The father of the Democratic Party, Andrew Jackson, famous line, "One person with courage makes majority." The situation on the living wage ordinance, in terms of those negotiations, it's a little unclear how the workers are gonna be protected, because you are not gonna have a situation where we're talking about an overlay zone in three or four months, and yet, so I think it's important that the council, Councilwoman Hahn, obviously the head of it, stand up for the workers, make sure that these people get their money come July, because there's nothing right now in the current circumstance that gives these workers what's promised. It's a classic Lincoln Place situation. We have promise for performance. Again, they got their performance from you guys, they got the thing repealed. You relied on their promise in granting them the repeal. Now, where's the protection? This is critically important. It's, and again, speaking of Lincoln Place, again, the promise for performance situation, we talked about enforcement, we're back to enforcement again. This council today, right now, can still protect those people at Lincoln Place. How? By calling AMCO in and having AMCO justify under 1227.1, you, they made a no eviction promise, the no eviction promise was violated, they got the performance, their entitlements. You have a procedure that you don't use. You don't enforce the laws to the extent that you can and that you should, and it's on every single level, whether it's development, conversions, tenant relocation, whatever. And so coming up to the upcoming budget hearings, I encourage anybody who's on this budget committee, give Gil Goldberg the money that she needs to have adequate enforcement so that we don't have these problems, create a structure, and we can change that bureaucratic mindset, and then I think we'll have less of a problem. One final point, Mr. Labange's idea about having some kind of ombudsman to take care of these public comments, I think, again, reiterated today, maybe fund them a little bit, have somebody, have somebody that can kind of cross barriers here, and maybe we can begin to get some action as opposed to just...
Thank you. Candida Morris is our next speaker.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, and again, welcome to the heart of the San Fernando Valley, where we hope to renew, rebuild, and revitalize the Van Nuys community. I really want to address the problem of the gang situation, and we're in crisis here in the 6th District. Our children are dying everywhere, and it's gotta stop. But Ms. Gruehl, Ms. Hahn, especially Ms. Hahn, you tried to bring something forth that you got a lot of criticism from. The John and Kent Show, they had a big thing about you. I called to try to get on there, but they, you know, they don't put their money where their mouth is, they wouldn't allow me to get on there. So again, I'm asking this council to continue this fight. I've been here since 1991, the 6th District is in crisis, we're having too many things happen. We need your leadership, we need your leadership. So hopefully the mayor will have something, and together the council and the mayor can get together, and we can finally put an end to the gang problems we have in this city. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Morris, our next and final speaker for public comments.
Thank you very much, city council, for joining me in my private chambers. I spend here 30 days a week, 29 days a week, so it's elaborate. We got Candida, yeah, Candida, I'd like to say, he's running for city council, CD6. Here's a man who shows up every day, he cares about the community. You know, I'm not getting into politics now, but I will say, this guy shows up, he's in the community, he's caring, and look at him, this guy looks like a council member. Stand up a second, y'all. This guy looks like a council member, yeah, yeah. I'd also like to say, Councilmember Zine, I know that the medical marijuana dispensaries are a big issue in this town, and you're not sure where the dispensaries are, and that is a problem. Of course, I promote Prop 215, I support the dispensaries, but you know, there has to be some regulation, they can't be too out of control. I say target the doctors, right here, Sergeant and Arson come up, I got a list of all the dispensaries, right here, printed, I think it can be distributed, please, very serious, and they update it daily at gondagrocer.com, and that's where those cards are from. Thank you. It's time for Zoomin' Dog, State of the City. First of all, thank you so much for writing an article for a local newspaper about SCAG, a regional article, and what a privilege it is to come here. You know, I'm pretty gruff, you know, I get really upset a lot of times over these issues, but you know what? It's a lot of fun. I just got to interview Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Zine for the article, so what better thing to come to City Hall, people, talk to your council members, write about it in the newspaper. This has been, I feel like the Wizard of Oz today, Dorothy waking up. We just had Jim McQuinston, Jim McQuinston, he gave me a memo here of how to be more effective, and said, "Thank you for taking interest in the city, how it's being run. We need more people like you to take interest necessary." KABC was talking about me, a caller called up and said, "Hey, KFI was talking about you." It's like we got radio shows talking about me. I was interviewed in Cape Cod for a podcast about my work here in Los Angeles. It's been an extremely gratifying experience, the first day I've experienced. I used to work in the radio industry, I played pool with the Rolling Stones, dinner with Tina Turner, but this experience in City Hall with the community...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Doug. That closes our public comment. Yeah, yeah. And we'll go back to the items called special. First item, please, Madam Speaker.
Is item number nine, and that's confirmation of Dr. Yasmin Delahoussaye to the Human Relations Commission.
Okay. We do have one public comment card that we'll take before that downtown, Ms. Hawkins, and I would remind Ms. Hawkins that what is before us is a nomination to the Human Relations Commission. If you'll please keep your comments germane to that subject, Ms. Hawkins. One minute, please.
Again, good morning, thank you, President Eric Garcetti. I would like this time to halt my comments and my information concerning LAX traffic plan to a later date. Thank you very much. My name is Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. If there's no objection, by the way, colleagues will send eight forthwith, and at this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Labange, I think this came through your committee, is that right, Human Relations Commission, and ask the nominee to come forward. Should he please join us here at the table? I'm sorry, it's Education Neighborhoods, but...
Right, it's okay, but just the same here, you can sit at the center table right here.
Come to the center table, please.
If you help here.
Thank you.
You do. Thank you very much. I think we have a great citizen in Los Angeles who truly is gonna serve the city of Los Angeles well. Human relations is so important. If you want to just give us a little bit of your passion, it would be helpful.
Thank you. I'd like to let you know that I'm a 30-year career educator in the city of Los Angeles. I began my career at Foché Junior High School, I've taught at Fox Junior High, Taft High School, then I transferred and went to Pierce College, and currently a senior-level administrator at Los Angeles Valley College, and an adjunct professor at UCLA in the School of Education. My specialty is educational leadership. We train principals, superintendents, college presidents in the program that I teach in. Having this doctorate in educational leadership has really prepared me for the task at hand, and I will say that I arrived in this city in 1964, and I remember as a young child standing in my parents' bedroom and watching the city burn during the Watts riots or the revolution, as some people would call it. And I remember noting that, you know, I knew that this city was in trouble, and as an educator, I know that a lot of the problems that we have in the city stem from our educational system, and I know that a lot of our gang problems start in the high schools. Grant High School is across the street from Valley College, and as you know, there's been a recurring problem at Grant High School. So I, for one, am thrilled and delighted to be a part of the Human Relations Commission because I want to get involved in this, in this problem. A lot of the students at Grant High School, they come to Valley College, and the one thing that I've noticed is that if you keep your ear to the ground and you build trust with these young people, you don't have the kind of problems that they have at Grant High School. I've been impressed with the work of the Watts Gang Task Force, and I believe that this is something that we can spread throughout the city very effectively. So I'll keep this very short and end by just saying that I know that the work of the Human Relations Commission is very important, it's necessary, and I want you to know that I plan to hit the ground running. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. You could see from Dr. Delahoussaye's remarks, her passion, and I think also, too, we remember as a child, as she reflected in 1964, '65, and your image is now as an administrator at one of the finest of all community colleges in the state. She will bring greatness to our Human Relations Commission. I recommend an I-vote, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Ms. Hahn is our acting chair of Education Neighborhoods. My apologies, is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. While I certainly rise and support this appointment to the Human Relations Commission, and you're exactly, really, the perfect person to serve on this commission. I think your background, your education, your training, your keen insight, really into Los Angeles and to what are some of the root causes of, particularly of gang violence. And I love that you gave a shout-out to our Watts Gang Task Force, because it is a great model, and the Human Relations Department in the city has really been working with us closely for a year now to have short-term and long-term goals for ending violence in the Watts community. And as you know, we are experiencing, I think, an all-time high gang violence, particularly in our schools. Yesterday, I was at Markham Middle School, and there was an anecdote, which was hard to believe, but it was that when kids go to Markham, you know, we're talking sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, you know, when they arrive, they're already being recruited by gangs, and they're given like a list of six gangs that they can join. In other words, to ensure their safety to and from school and in school. That was shocking to me, and I think it starts even before high school, where we need to get, and I think the Human Relations Commission will emerge, I think, this year as one of the key commissions in the city of Los Angeles to begin to address and recommend and help implement an overall strategy for fighting gangs. So I think it's time that the commission really takes its place and its seat at the table in Los Angeles for trying to end gang violence once and for all. So I think you are the perfect person to sit on this commission, and I wholeheartedly endorse your opponent, I mean, your appointment. I know. I can inform...
I didn't know I had an opponent.
You have to run for this, actually.
Your appointment, and offer you my assistance as we work together to try to solve this problem, which now has put us in the national spotlight in a back... which now has put us in the national spotlight in a bad way.
Well, thank you, and I do look forward to working with you because I know that the community... I was in Watts last night, and I know that the community thinks very highly of you, your work, your time, and your effort, so... Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zion is our next speaker, and then Mr. Weezer.
Thank you. I want to congratulate you on this challenging task. The executive director, Rabbi, does a wonderful job, and he's very, very involved. And he wants to have this commission support the goals and the activities. I know he's reached out to the communities, the schools, everywhere from the South Valley to the San Pedro, east and west. So you get on the commission, as Councilman Han has said, is very involved and very active in trying to turn the tide of some of the tragedies that we see occurring more and more. And it's not only the gangs, but it's that anti-Semitism and all those other negative factors that sometimes people bring out that destroy the relationships that we should have in a positive city of the angels. So I congratulate you on taking that challenge and that task. But Rabbi Freeling is a good director to really work hard at it, and he's... I'm surprised he's not here today. He's got to be doing something important, otherwise he wouldn't be here supporting this commission appointment. But congratulations to it. You're going to have your hands full, and you'll have my support, and I'm sure this entire body.
Thank you, Mrs. Zion.
I realize that, and I do take the challenge on, and I appreciate the fact that you guys are considering this appointment seriously and that you do want a career educator on it. I think that that's what's been lacking on the Human Relations Commission.
When we talk about the gangs, as Councilman Rahm knows down in South Los Angeles, they've been there for many, many years, but they're percolating through all parts of the city now. And it's, by the time they're in high school, they're gone. And it's going to be the middle school, the elementary school where we really have to capture and get them on the right track. I know that reading the police reports that we're having here in the valley, the incidents that have happened there, which have been commonplace or starting to be commonplace all over the city of Los Angeles. And we spend a lot of money, a lot of resources, but we really need to get to the core of that. And hopefully, this commission can help achieve that for everyone's benefit. But I want to acknowledge Janice, who's worked tirelessly to try and turn the tide in that community where there's a lot of violence and a lot of hatred that we need to eliminate. So this commission obviously be at the forefront. Police Department has to do their thing, but the commission on the other side can do the proactive and the positive to make it a better place for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zion. Mr. Weezer is our next speaker.
Thank you very much. I wanted to congratulate you and thank you in advance for your service on this commission. And one of the things I wanted to raise to your attention, I think to all of our attentions, is we talk about how important it is and the need to continue to have this commission involved in our schools. Yet each and every year, there is a discussion about how we do not fully fund the activities that we're doing in our schools. The city has sought reimbursement from the school district on various occasions. When I was on the school board, I was very supportive of that. Unfortunately, we still hear today that we're not having the sufficient funding necessary to do the work that we're doing at the school district. I would hope that in the next year, we finally put this to rest, and we, as we're talking here today about how important it is that we finally get this... And it's not your job, it's our job as a council to make sure we get the work that this commission is doing at our school districts fully funded and even expanded because the need is there. And as we talk to data prevention that this commission provides is enormous. We wouldn't be hearing the reports we do today if we had expanded the work this commission is doing at our school district. So this, something I just wanted to raise to you, make you aware of, and hopefully, working with the council and the commission, we could finally put this to rest as coming here.
Thank you for those comments, and I absolutely want to say that I agree with that because last night in Watts, as we heard the speakers, you know, sometimes you think you can't be shocked by something. But I was shocked to hear that six- and seven-year-olds are bringing guns to school. So you're right, we need to fully fund this commission, and we do need to go down to the elementary level, so I agree.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl, then, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Augustine Contreras was a young man who was seventeen years old, gunned down in the parking lot at Venice High School. Gangs in the 11th District exist. People think it's only in the East Side or South Side, but everything flows together in terms of the gangs. And the Human Relations Commission got right engaged right away, and I know you will do the same thing. Can you just give me a sense of the vision you'll bring to the commission that will help us move forward in dealing with the violence and the gangs?
Well, as I stated, one of the things that I have been doing, actually, for the past five years, is teaching at UCLA. And UCLA turns out leaders, educational leaders. So we actually are turning out the leadership in terms of the principals and the assistant principals. Your leadership is where it starts. At Valley College, which is right across the street from Grant High School, I'm the vice president of Student Affairs. And so when your leaders are involved with your student body, I think that getting them on board and training them and being involved in trying to get to those root causes, as Janice said, is really going to take the Human Relations Commission in a different focus. So my role and my task is going to be heavily involved in the advisory capacity of working with the Human Relations staff members that are in the schools, whether it be elementary, junior high, or high school.
That's very good. Just throwing out something that would be really your overall responsibility, but we as a city, and would love to get your support on. We're going to be spending billions of dollars on reinvestment in our infrastructure, be it the airport, be it the police building, be it all these other things. We really need to create a central point for job programs for kids at risk, where we get rid of this felony concept and these other things, and take these young men and women and give them not just after-school programs, but job opportunities. Over the next ten years, we're literally going to spend billions of dollars on improvements to our great city. What an opportunity to link it with real jobs for these young people so there is a true alternative. And I look forward to some leadership coming out of this commission, and it's really the mayor and the council that have to do that. But thank you for stepping forward. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cardenas is our next speaker.
Thank you very much. We all have a lot of big responsibilities ahead of us. If we're going to not only speak about gang crime and about safety in the city of Los Angeles and the surrounding community, we have a big task of trying to figure out what we're going to do better than what we've been doing in the past, which programs have actually been working well, which programs can work better if we bring them the resources and the tools they need to be better and effective in what they're doing. The reason why I'm pointing this out is because I hear all too often, especially from the press, just, I think it was yesterday, there was a headline that in Bush's budget is going to be $200 million to assist in gang solutions across the country. And being a former budget chairman of the State Assembly myself, and when I budgeted a $100 billion budget, I was only able to get $121 million for the state of California, which was a decent amount of money, still nowhere near the amount of money that needs to be dedicated in California alone. So as I read the article, my fears were realized. It's wonderful to see that Washington is trying to attempt to do something, but it's a dismal effort in the sense that if you read the articles yesterday in the Daily News and the LA Times, the headline is $200 million. But all that means for us of a city of four million people is we can actually try to get, and I hope we do get, a grant of $50,000 to $200,000. Do the math. That's maybe a nickel a person or something like that. It's not enough. It's not what needs to be done. But what we do need to do is be honest with each other, with the community, with ourselves, commissioners, elected officials, the mayor, all of us, the police department, is be honest with ourselves and be ready, willing, and able, over the coming months, to work together to create solutions to make Los Angeles a safer place, but equally, not only a safer place, but a better place for children. A place where children have places to play, a children where they have organizations and programs welcoming them to be able to be there, be it midnight basketball or tutoring on their homework, instead of hanging out on the corner with the people they shouldn't be hanging out with. That's going to take a lot of effort. That's going to take a lot of work. It's going to take a lot more resources than we have on the table today. So I welcome your appointment. I support your appointment. I know that with your background, you get it. You understand how serious it is. You understand how complicated it is, and you understand that there are no silver bullets. So that's why I welcome your appointment, because you're a voice of reason. You're someone who's done much with very little in helping young people to realize that higher education is the way to go, taking children that other people have forgotten and making sure that they believe in themselves. You believe in them, and now they have a testament to who they are because of people like you. So I support your appointment because you're a practical, very giving individual and someone who gets it. You understand what we're up against. Thank you.
Thank you, and we do have one more public speaker, Carter from Brodus, if you'd like to come forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. There are no accidents in our lives, and there's no accident that for some reason, I was blessed to be here, be recognized by the city council, but at the same time, to be here with Dr. Yasmin Delahoussaye, to hear and be here as she is, questions for her confirmation. I served on the Los Angeles County Commission on Human Relations. I have worked with Yasmin for many years, and I just would like to add my name to the list of names that I've heard so far that have recommended her for this position on the city commission. So again, I'm just here to say, bravo, city council. Once again, you made a very well fought-out decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reverend, and thank you for your service on the county commission as well. With that, we will open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Round of applause for our next speaker. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused Friday, February 23rd for city business to leave at 11:30. That meets council policy.
Okay, he is excused.
Councilmember Smith requests to be excused Tuesday, February 20th for city business. That meets council policy.
He's excused for city business.
Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused Friday, February 23rd for city business. That meets council policy.
He's excused for city business.
And Councilmember Weezer requests to be excused Tuesday, February 6th for city business, excuse me, for personal, and Friday, February 23rd to leave at 12:15 for city business, and the motion is required, and that would leave 11:00.
On for the Friday?
Yes.
Okay, I'll move that. Ms. Gruehl, seconds. Those excuses are granted.
And that clears the desk.
All right, colleagues, now it's time for announcements. You have any announcements? Ms. Gruehl.
I just want to... Many of you saw in the paper today, and Tom brought this to me as well because it's from my alma mater, Rashid Davis, who went to Kennedy High School, who will be there on Sunday playing in the Super Bowl, and someone who came from South Los Angeles, took the bus to the San Fernando Valley to Kennedy High School, had to leave at 5:00, had to wake up at 5:00 a.m., didn't get to play as much football while he was at Kennedy because the bus, he would have had to take a city bus, which would have taken him three hours to get home. But he persevered, and if you read the story today in the Daily News, it's really amazing. His father was killed by a drive-by shooting when he was young, just really went against the odds. And so we wish him luck, depending upon, doesn't even matter which team you're supporting on Sunday, but one of our Valley's own will be part of that team on the field, and so we will be thinking about him from Kennedy High School.
Which team is he on?
What?
Which team is he on?
He is in the Chicago Bears.
That's unfortunate, but we wish him well. All right, are there announcements? Mr. Labange.
Well, yeah, it's a great story about a young man who grew up right near the Coliseum, really, and went by school bus out to Kennedy High and only played junior varsity football and made it to the pros after playing at San Jose State. And wonderful story. Let's cheer him all on. Have a safe weekend, as we all cheer for our teams. I know Mr. Garcetti's for Indiana, summer for Chicago, but let's pray for a good game. And at halftime, make sure everybody take a good exercise and stretch out and walk.
We will do that. Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other announcements? Colleagues, tomorrow, the East Hollywood Community Association will be doing a large tree planting, part of our community improvement efforts and also part of our Cities Million Tree Initiative. That will be from 9:00 to 12:00. Bring your boots and your gloves. We'll be meeting at Kwenga Branch Library at 9:00 a.m., and we invite folks to come join us and hope to see Virgil Avenue beautified through some of our tree plantings there. Mr. Weezer.
That reminded me about a great event this past Saturday where we planted over 560 trees in Estrada Courts in Bow Heights, an area that has been known to have more concrete than green space. And the residents were thrilled yesterday, we had met with them Monday night, that we are doing this million-dollar tree initiative. And, Mr. Garcetti, I look forward to seeing your 100,000 trees planted in your district.
And your 101,000, I believe, Mr. Weezer?
My 101,000 in my district, yes.
Some of us can't aspire to that many, but we do look forward to them just as much. Mr. Labange.
Well, fortunately, with the 4,212 acres of Griffith Park, there's a lot of trees that come every year naturally, so I count those up. So I'm at 250,000. But we're going to have a tree planting this weekend in Runyon Canyon, and welcome everyone to come at 9:00 a.m. before the big Super Bowl. But it's important to plant a tree and put your hands in the ground and bring back nature to the city, so I thank you. And, Mr. Weezer, as you know, with your initiative, I appreciate the trees that you planted. My alma mater there at Cal State Los Angeles, there's a nice new bank on that road, a thousand trees could go, so... Talk to Dr. Rossner out there, and I'm sure that'd be a good one. I'll help you on that. Love the association.
Thank you. Any other announcements, colleagues? No, if I could, please ask everybody in council chambers to rise for our adjourning motions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Han.
I'd like us to adjourn today in memory of Alice Clover, who passed away January 28th at the age of 85. Alice was a member of the Army Nursing Corps during World War II, and while she was stationed in England, she met her first husband, Kenneth Henle, and they married and together had five children, two of which were my good friends at Lutheran High School in the late '60s and '70s. He retired from the Army at Fort MacArthur in San Pedro in 1961, and after 23 years of marriage, he passed away in 1968. And it was, I remember it being very traumatic for my friends in high school. Their dad had died so unexpectedly. And then in 1970, she married Glenn Clover, and together they moved around but returned to San Pedro about five years ago. And she survived by her husband Glenn and her five children, Nancy, Jay, Bruce, and Janice and Wendy, who were my good friends in high school. And by Glenn's daughter, Colleen, as well as 14 grandchildren and five great-grandchildren. She's also survived by her two brothers and numerous nieces and nephews. Her services will be today at 3:00 at Green Hills Chapel in Rancho Palos Verdes. I'd also like us to adjourn in the memory of Miss Esther Nash Farrell, who passed away recently. She was the wife of the late Assemblyman Frederick Farrell, who served the 55th Assembly District from 1962 to 1966. She was very active in her church, first lady of the Tabernacle of Faith Baptist Church in Compton. She mentored children for more than 24 years while also raising her own family. She survived by her children Frederick, Sheridan, and Stephanie, her church family, and many other friends and family. And one more, I'd like us to adjourn in memory of the grandmother of one of my staff members, Diego Valdez, and that's Candelaria Ramos, who passed away on January 27th, and she was 72 years old. She survived by 13 children, 26 grandchildren, and two great-grandchildren. And her services were actually held yesterday in Ensenada, Mexico.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Mr. Labange.
Members, I ask you to adjourn in memory of Danny Feingold, who lived to be 52, died too early. You saw his obituary in the paper this week. He was quite an interesting individual, lived in Los Feliz, had a beautiful family. Danny Feingold died at 52. I ask you to adjourn in his memory. Equally, I ask you to adjourn in memory of Cindy Sheldon, who is 89, one of the great artists of the world, who, a writer, won an Oscar, a Tony, and a Grammy, and lived a full life. And finally, I ask you to adjourn in memory of Roy Miller, passed away recently. He was a retired partner at Gibson, Dunn &amp; Crutcher, greatly involved with our community in many boards and foundations, including the Claremont School of Theology. He survived by his wife, Jan. I ask you to adjourn in memory of Roy Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Russell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, many of you know my staff member, Michael. You see that he's not here today. His grandmother passed away. So I'd like to adjourn in the memory of young joy, Michael Byes' grandmother. The services will be this Monday, 10:00, and I'll find out where and let other staff and see how.
Thank you. We'll put all members on that. Hold on one second for announcements. We'll do one more adjourning motion, and then we'll get to that. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today in memory of a great American who passed away on Wednesday. Molly Ivins, columnist and bestselling author, who died after a long recurring battle with breast cancer. recurring battle with breast cancer. A 62-year-old writer, was a rare commodity in Texas, a liberal, who wrote a twice-weekly column that appeared in at least 300 newspapers. Based in Austin, her commentary appeared in national magazines from Harper's to Playboy, and her Texas draw was heard, parsing events on shows ranging from 60 Minutes to the News Hour. She did not confine her humor skewering to Republicans, she aimed it wherever she perceived pomposity or wrongdoing. And as evidenced, two different presidents gave statements, one from President Bush, who Ms. Ivins referred to as "shrub." He expressed his condolences to Ms. Ivins' family and friends. Quote, "Molly Ivins was a Texas original. I respected her convictions, her passionate belief in the power of words, and her ability to turn a phrase. Her quick wit and commitment to her beliefs will be missed." And recently, former President Bill Clinton took special note of her, saying, "I want to say a special word of appreciation to someone who was good when she praised me and painfully good when she criticized me. Molly Ivins, thank you for being a great journalist and a great lover of Texas and the United States." She was diagnosed with breast cancer in 1999, recurred in 2003, and returned again in November 2005. She gave speeches frequently, talking about everything from the First Amendment and surviving breast cancer, and brought her own keen observation tinged with humor to describe the dismal disease. Quote, "Having breast cancer is massive amounts of no fun. First, they mutilate you, then they poison you, then they burn you. I've been on blind dates better than that," she said. She was born Mary Tyler Ivins in Monterey, California, but her family moved to Houston soon after her father was discharged from his duties in the Pacific after World War II. In high school, interestingly, she and George W. Bush shared a number of mutual friends. She attended Smith College in 1960, got involved in the civil rights movement, got a graduate degree in journalism at Columbia University, and her first newspaper job was in the Complaints Department of the Houston Chronicle, where she referred to herself as "the sewer reporter." Then Minneapolis Tribune hired her as one of the first female police beat reporters. She went on to become co-editor of the Texas Observer, and then New York Times hired her in 1976. In 1982, she worked as a columnist at Dallas Times-Herald, and then the Fort Worth Star Telegram. She wrote six bestselling books, and the most recent being Who Let the Dogs In?, and Bushwhacked Life in George W. Bush's America in 2003. And she was never married, and said in a recent article that she has dedicated charitable requests to her two cherished institutions, the ACLU and the Texas Observer. And in closing, she said famously, "I believe ignorance is the root of all evil," and that no one knows the truth. She survived by her sister Sarah Ivins-Maley of Albuquerque, New Mexico, her brother Andy Ivins of London, Texas, sister-in-law Carla Ivins, nephew Drew and niece Darby, niece Margot Hutchinson, and her husband Neil, and their children as well. May she rest in peace, and certainly, her writings will live on for many years to come. Mr. Rosendahl.
I'd like to second that, and having been a journalist all those years, biting our tongue half the time is a thing, and it was great to see that somebody very refreshingly would call things as they are. And obviously, knowledge is power, and the more you empower people with real information, the better the democracy works. But I also have an adjourning motion.
Yes, please, I'm sorry.
Marlene Salazar, who works for me, her grandfather died during the night, and she's right now working on the funeral arrangements. She took her father in and was his caregiver, and so really, my prayers are for Marlene as she deals with this, and may her father rest in peace.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cardenas?
Yeah, I'd just like to announce that my Assemblyman, Richard Alatcorn, is here in the chambers. Just wanted to say thank you for coming to our Valley meeting.
Thank you. Great to have you here, Councilmember and Assemblymember. Any other announcements, colleagues? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, that is, the 6th of February, in City Hall Chambers downtown. We look forward to seeing our viewers and visitors there. In the meantime, have a great weekend, and this meeting is adjourned.